The Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna to order. And I have one of my fellow commissioners who's going to lead us
In the place.
in an in-person flag salute as we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason just for all.
Thank you. And now city staff would do roll call.
Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Chairman Bradley has let us know that he will not be attending. Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Commissioner Keine.
Here.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
Vice Chair Seitz.
Here.
And Commissioner Wells has also let us know that he will not be in attendance.
Thank you. Before we go to approval of minutes and review the minutes here, would staff, do you guys mind going over? Because this is our first in-person planning commission meeting since the COVID situation had us on Zoom. Would you go over any procedural things or any changes that we need to think of? As this is our first in-person meeting in two years.
So we will no longer need to do roll call vote to adjourn or to end the public comment section since we are all here and you can all do a voice vote.
Anything else?
No.
Thanks. Okay, you have your minutes before you from March 8th, 2022. If you would give me a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 8th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Keine.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Seitz.
Yes. At this time, we're going to receive oral comments from the public. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest, not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Be advised that by law, the commission is not able to deliberate or take action on issues presented during this oral comments.
Seeing no one in here, we're going to close.
Very well. We're going to close public comment at this time, seeing no one wanting to take advantage of that. Moving on to item four of our agenda business, we have a public hearing to consider approval of a conditional use permit to allow an accessory structure 16 feet in height, exceeding the Fortuna Municipal Code 15-foot minimum for accessory structures. At this time, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chairman Seitz and planning commissioners. So yeah, this application is a conditional use permit request. As Chairman Seitz read the agenda or the title, it's to construct an accessory structure that's 16 feet in height. And the Fortuna Municipal Code limits accessory structures to 15 feet in height, but it does have an allowance that allows up to 30 feet in height with issuance of a conditional use permit. And this is only one foot over, but as the city attorney lets me know, you know, if it's 15, it's 15.0. So anyway, I think, you know, you'll see that it's a benign structure. It's, it fits in with the neighborhood. I'm going to go ahead and show a few slides to demonstrate the project. So this is the site plan. Apologies, the lines are thin, but you can see, so Kenmore Road is at the bottom of the screen. And you can see the driveway just off of Kenmore Road. And the larger outlined square is the main residence that is existing there, already occupied. And the proposed shop or garage is the rectangle to the right. So the, let's see. The structure is, the footprint is approximately, it's 22 feet by 35 feet. And the, so the outer line is the property lines. And it does meet the setbacks. They show, you know, I'm sorry, I can't read the numbers, but I believe that's five, five or seven feet on the side. I'm going to look at my, see if I can see better. Six feet, six feet on the side. That smaller setback for the shop. And then the front setback along Kenmore Road is a minimum 20 feet. And so that is, I think it's just over, it's either 20 or over 20, but it does line up with the existing residence. And then in the back, there's ample room. The property is 100 feet on the long edge and 86 feet on the shorter edge. So that, you know, at 8,600 square feet, it's, you know, somewhat larger than the minimum parcel size for the R160, which is 6,000 square feet. So there's ample room on the site to accommodate the structure. And then so this is the, the existing residence is on the left and the shop or garage is on the, the existing residence is on the left and the shop is on the right. And the reason for the request for the, why the additional foot is needed is that the applicant wants to maintain the slope of the roof to match the main residence, which I think is a, you know, really nice feature. It just makes the development look more harmonious and just architecturally, you know, more aesthetically pleasing. So I think in that regard, you know, and with the minimum, you know, the minimal increase, I think it, you know, it fits in with, with the development on the site. The project is located in the R160. This shows the location and you can see that, you know, it's well surrounded by like, you know, similar lots. And it's, you know, fully developed with single-family residences. And this is an aerial, so you can see the neighboring residences. And this demonstrates, you know, we like to look at the neighboring properties to see if any, you know, if any residences are impacted, you know. And typically that's more of a concern if the height is, you know, exceeds, you know, if it's a taller structure or a two-story structure or something like that. But in this case, it's a pretty, you know, it's not going to be noticeable anyway. But you can see that there's ample room. The neighboring residence is the sort of irregular T-shaped, upside-down T-shaped property. So their house is set way back. And then of course, the house on the right side, which is to the east, is going to be blocked by the main residence. So, you know, virtually there's not going to be anybody impacted by the increase in height. And this is a street view of the approximate, very rough. This is not to scale. It just shows the general area where that the structure will be located. And, you know, it's, I think it's an appropriate location. You know, with the same roof height, it's going to look nice. There's nothing impacted. That building that you can see to the right is set way back. And that is the shop for that, that neighboring residence. Oh, and that's it. Let's see. So the structure does meet the zoning setbacks and the building coverage. Those are the, really the only two zoning standards that typically get applied on the R160 developments. There's ample distance. The height is similar to, you know, what's typical for residential neighborhood. It's not going to impact any neighbors. And the design is compatible with the existing and the neighboring residences. So with that, staff does recommend approval of the use permit for that extra one foot in height to result in a 16-foot detached shop. And I'll hand that back to the planning commission.
Do the planning commissioners have questions or discussion for staff? Or one another?
Nope, that's good.
I have a question, and it might have been in the packet, but I don't remember from reading through it. Do you know what year that house was built? Looks pretty new.
Yeah, it is fairly new, the aerial. If, if you, yeah, go ahead.
2019.
Okay, great. Thanks.
That's really new. So yeah, the aerial, I meant to point that out. There's, you know, on the aerial, obviously they took the, you know, the aerial photograph after the, the old building was demolished. And so you just see the graded, you know, the building site. But then the street view that you saw does show the new, new residence.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners? At this time, we'll open this item to public comment. Any questions from commissioners to? Are you the owner, sir?
Yes.
Okay. You're more than welcome to speak if you'd like.
Motion to close public comment.
Okay, there's a motion to close public comment, so we will close public comment at this time. Planning Commission, what's your pleasure?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep, it's going to look great and give him a nice storage. I like it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution P 2022-3083, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving the use permit for accessory structures 16 feet in height.
I will second that.
We have a motion as well as a second. We will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Keine.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Seitz.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item five on our agenda for tonight, Staff Presentation and Discussion on the Missing Middle Housing Opportunities.
Third second to change the power flow?
You bet. No problem. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is something, so the missing middle is a housing opportunity. It's a style of housing, of creating like medium density, usually medium density housing, which is, you know, typically more affordable, meets a certain, you know, population's affordability and lifestyle and things like that. Something that we've been talking about at a staff level. Some of the SB2 programs that are underway, approved the accessory dwelling unit ordinance under that SB2 grant. So we're going to be looking at residential multifamily design standards and, you know, some other kind of housing-related things. So as we've been doing that at a staff level, this is a housing type that came into the discussion. And it just is something that's kind of interesting and I wanted to pass it on to you. I think some of the, you know, opportunities do present themselves in Fortuna. And so I just wanted to give you a really quick, you know, demonstration of it. This will probably take maybe 15 minutes, I think at the most. We'll, we'll time, time me. So what is the missing middle? So it's actually, it's missing because it's mid, it's basically zoned out. So it's kind of prohibited by typical modern zoning standards. It's missing in that regard. And it's middle because it's kind of mid-range in between the two types that we are accustomed to seeing, which is detached, single-family homes, which obviously is the kind of the gold standard. You know, it's the, the style that we're used to. And, you know, most people aspire to single-family homeownership. And of course, that's, you know, drastically getting out of reach for mo, you know, for young people, for single people, you know, anybody, you know. It's just really anybody without a lot of money or maybe inherited money or is, you know, upper kind of income occupation. So it's really becoming more, and it doesn't seem to be, you know, any change on the horizon. So cities are trying to adapt, you know, at the same time that housing is unaffordable, you know, there's just more and more of a demand for affordable housing. So anyways, get back to the, the missing part. So we're used to the single family. We know what that looks like. And that's on the graphic up there, that would be way to the left. And then to the right are the more high, you know, the high-density multifamily that typically gets built. I think, you know, the high-rises that you see there, you know, may look more like big city style, but you know, really we see that in Fortuna as well, just not as drastic. So, you know, the stacked multifamily units where, you know, the renters are kind of, you know, kind of packed in there, close proximity, not a lot of open space. And people typically, you know, I think there's a little negative connotation to that kind of housing, and people don't really aspire to that. You know, they might be kind of more forced into it. So anyway, we, we know what those two look like. The missing middle that's basically zoned out and it, so it's more difficult for developers to, you know, get approvals. It's just not something that is a common, you know, it's not a first choice because they want to go for what's going to be a straightforward process. So the missing middle are things that actually are typically in the old parts of town because they used to be constructed more commonly. And also, you know, say before the 1940s and 50s, the zoning was less restrictive. So the single-family and multifamily were really zoned, you know, after the war. Single families, homes were promoted. And so that, you know, that became the standard. So the missing middle, so it's in between those two types of uses. And so they can be, you know, usually they're smaller or mid-sized lots. You know, lots actually, you know, in most cities and in Fortuna, so the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. And, you know, all you can do with that is a single-family home, which, you know, that's appropriate. So the missing middle might be on smaller lots or just built, you know, built with different setback standards where, you know, they're more accommodating. And then the main thing about the missing middle is that the reason I think why it seems appealing to us is that the, the units are designed to look like single-family homes. So, you know, either through design or just through conversion of large old homes, you know, they turn into, say, a duplex or a fourplex. But the main thing is that they resemble single-family homes. And so they merge, you know, kind of seamlessly into, you know, they're appropriate for neighboring single-family zones. And they don't create a visual impact because, you know, they really blend in. So I'm going to go over, so you can see on the, the image there, the, the uses can be a duplex. It can be a triplex or a fourplex. They can be courtyard apartments, bungalow courts, townhomes, and then multiplex or live-work units. And I'll just, I'm just going to run through examples of each of those and how, how they fit in with the neighborhood. So this is a courtyard development. And, you know, it's actually more dense than it looks. The, but the courtyard creates a community and open space for that neighborhood. And I, actually, I think I have better examples of courtyards. But, you know, but the architecture is nice and it doesn't look like, you know, a stacked box or a mid-rise or a high-rise multifamily apartment box. So there's the courtyard apartment at the top. The bungalow court on the upper right is similar to the courtyard. But the units, bungalow courts are typically single-story and they typically have some open space. The neighbors, you know, have some separation. But the style still creates like a community. And so, you know, it's not, it's not an isolating feeling like some of the, you know, dense apartment buildings are. Same with the multiplex. Typically, the multiplex can look like it's a large, single-family home. And there's some other examples of that. Courtyard, the upper right is a duplex, side-by-side. Duplexes can also be stacked. But, you know, those are, those are typically going to resemble a single-family. In fact, that one, you know, you would not know the difference. You wouldn't know that that's a higher density there. Multiplex on the lower right and then another bungalow court. The building on the right is, it's a multiplex. So I think that one has four units. But from the street, you know, you would pass that by. And, you know, just, it would seem like a single, a large, single-family home. And same with, oh, the one to the right is a small-lot, single-family home. So so it's going to be constructed like a single-family, but, you know, the small lot will allow greater density. And then on the top left, a duplex, side-by-side. And then a stacked duplex on the right. The lower-left townhouses can be a missing middle. And I think the thing in this case, or any missing middle, is that it be designed, you know, to resemble residences. So it blends in, it's harmonious with the neighborhood. And if it's designed properly, you know, it's going to have some open space. In this case, there are yards in the front. The, how, the entries face the front. And, you know, the roof lines and the windows, architectural features are more conducive to a single-family neighborhood. So this is a duplex. And, you know, you'd never know that it's more than a single-family. And typically, especially in the older parts of town, you know, these are, these might be in between commercial center and single-family zoning. So it's kind of a transition. So, you know, the single families typically, you wouldn't find them directly next to the commercial center. You know, so you might have a multifamily zone. But in this case, you know, in, in the older neighborhoods, there's a natural conversion of those residences that surround a commercial zone. Or some cities are actually creating zones for this mid-range type of housing. This is a stacked duplex. It looks like a, you know, lovely house. This is another courtyard, a fourplex. You know, these, this could be a new construction or it could be a conversion of existing residents. And a lot of the, and this is actually a multiplex. It's, well, it's three units. So, you know, these larger homes in the older parts of town, you know, we know some of them that have been converted, but there are plenty of them around the perimeter, say of the downtown, over, you know, the neighborhood by the high school. And other characteristics of the missing middle is that, so you have this medium density. And so, you know, the, the, one of the keys is that they be within walking distance of either a downtown area or a business core or even just a store and, you know, a, a little restaurant, a coffee shop or something. So typically, these are people that want to live in a walkable part of town. And those would typically be single-family, or I mean, a single, you know, one-person household or households without children. And those can be millennials who obviously are getting priced out of the homeownership market or aging people, baby boomers, who now want to downsize and, you know, live in a more convenient, walkable area. So walkability is a component, a perceived lower density. So it's multifamily, but that's not the perception from the street. So, you know, single-family neighborhoods, you know, it's, it creates a transition without the objection of, you know, that, objection of a multifamily, you know, high-rise or high-density development. And, and then, you know, with that walkability and the medium density and the open space or shared open space or the courtyard types of developments, there's more of a sense of community. You know, single-family, like cul-de-sacs and the way that single-family units are, you know, and suburbs are auto-centric. And so, you know, any trip to the store is going to be a drive, not a walk. And the garages are out front, so you don't have the porches and the, the main entries and a lot of windows that face the street. So, you know, there's, there's just more opportunity in a medium density like this to know your neighbors, enjoy your neighbors, you know, enjoy seeing people out walking and things like that. So, you know, and I, apparently, you know, what I've read is that millennials are more and more looking for that type of a neighborhood. So where they want to walk or ride their bikes or not have to drive a half an hour to, or whatever, 15 minutes to get groceries and hang out and whatever. So, so this one is a multifamily with multiple units in it. This one is a new construction. And so obviously it was designed to look like, you know, it seems kind of like a mansion conversion or something like that. And then townhomes can be part of the missing middle. Townhomes are, can be created on separate lots so that they do allow homeownership and they're more affordable. And they're, and they can be designed, you know, the component of the missing middle is that the, the face of the building is more, you know, it kind of interacts with the street. So you see the entry and you have windows. And it encourages walking. You've got the parking in the back, so the front isn't consumed by the driveway and cars and garages. So how can the missing middle be applied? So these, so some cities are converting old strip malls in what they call grayfield redevelopment. Some cities are actually being really proactive and creating new communities in this style. Corridor development, so that would be maybe like a mixed use along an existing commercial, you know, corridor, like Fortuna Boulevard or Broadway. Revitalization of walkable urban places. That can be small-lot infill. Either infilling small lots within older parts of the city or creating subdivisions with smaller lots, say 3,000 or 4,000 square feet instead of 6,000. And then brownfield redevelopment, small to large sites. Transit-oriented development, that's more applicable in large cities. And neighborhood transitions from downtowns, which I think is what we have in Fortuna already undergoing that middle, missing middle kind of development. And then, so cities can look at, so cities can invest, not just, you know, with kind of redevelopment support, but with zoning and identifying areas, you know, existing commercial areas where it would make sense to have these. And one area that I think of in Fortuna is Camden Heights around the Market, which is, you know, a really nice commercial area that serves Camden Heights. I think they're really lucky to have the Market up there, the cafe, and whatever, I think there's a hairdresser up there. So that kind of an area would be conducive to a medium, kind of medium-density conversion or or, you know, conversion of existing neighborhood, or houses and units, and all. So, oh, so this is kind of like a, why do people, you know, really not care for high-density or multifamily when they hear of it? And one reason is just the design, you know, this kind of a design, and typically, that's what you get with multifamily, is, you know, the parking in the front, so the building is set back, and then, you know, you don't see entries or windows, there's no interaction with the street, so it's kind of an isolating way to design buildings. So some examples in Fortuna, I've just got like six or seven more slides here, this was kinda fun, did this quickly today. So that building on the right, it's at Ninth and N, and it does have at least two units, maybe more. There's an entry there, you can see the entry, and then there's another entry on the right. So, you know, it's already happening in these older houses. And then I thought it was funny, across, diagonally across the street is a new construction of a single-family home, which I think is kind of a missed opportunity for the city. You know, there, I think it'd be kinda more appropriate to have maybe, you know, two or three or four units there, since it's right, it's actually, it's actually an R16 zone, which is why that was built, but it's, you know, it's just a block off of Main Street. I think a high-density would've been really nice there. This is a duplex on the south, it's on Ninth Street, on the south side of Main Street. I think that's a really cute little house. These are the, I guess they're sort of like bungalows, or cottages on Main Street, of course, and this would fall under missing middle because, really because of the density, and because of the walkability. Even though I believe each of these buildings are on a separate lot, so that would also be missing middle, because they're probably three thousand square foot lots, and each of these are duplexes. So, you know, I think this is an example of how this style of construction is really, you know, really cute, and fun, for, you know, people who do wanna live in small units where it's walkable. But the zoning doesn't allow it, you know, these are older styles. And then this, same thing here, this is on Fourteenth, Fifteenth? And these are separate ownership, they're in separate parcels, but they're small lots and small houses, and they're, you know, right in the downtown area. And this is a, an old, I don't know, I guess craftsman-style, and I, off of, it's on N Street, between Fourteenth and Fourteenth. And there's at least, there are three addresses on the building, so there's at least three units that are utilizing this large, old house. And this is, this building's been vacant forever, probably twenty years, and it would be a great conversion to multifamily. It's, it's an old church, and it's all, well, it's additions, it's not a good, not necessarily, not necessarily good additions, but it's all one structure. It is in a single-family zone, so it would need to be rezoned. And this also is a single-family zone, but it's really large, and there probably are multiple, there might be multiple families living in there, but it would, it's, that would take a rezone. And this is, it would be a good transition, because you have downtown to the right, and then single-family development to the left, so it would be a really nice, nice transition that would need to be rezoned. Oh, this is a courtyard on Twelfth Street, twen- no, Ninth Street, towards the south end. And you can see a couple of the doors, it looks like a duplex, but actually, it's that, it's right in the middle, it's the two building, two L-shaped buildings that are facing each other, and, so it's a courtyard. So we do have, there are a couple of other courtyards in Fortuna, but this one, I think this one's probably the best maintained. It does, you can see the access off of, the parking off of the alley, so that's another reason I think that they're convenient in Fortuna, in the older parts of town, because then you can have the parking in the rear, and the building's closer up front. And then this is a new construction, which I think would fall under the missing middle. This is at School and Ornivale Road, constructed by the Fitzies a couple of years ago. And I think it's missing middle because, because of the density, there's four units, it's on a, you know, it's on a commercial road, it's actually a little bit of a, a small commercial zone that it's in. And, you know, it's within walking distance to Camden Heights, but it's designed to look like a single-family home, so, you know, and I think with the entry, the way they've enhanced the entryways, and the windows, and kind of mimicked a craftsman-style, I think that puts it in the missing middle category. This is a new construction, we did try for, you know, we tried to help the developer get to a, like, a single-family style, this is on Stillman Way, kinda behind the Schott's driveway. And, but it's a single-family developed area, but it's multifamily zoning, so they did give it a try, but again, they had the issue with the parking, where they needed to have the garages up front. And then the, oops. The other angle, though, the zoning actually helped here, because the setback for a multifamily adjacent to a single-family did require that they stepped to the height of the building, and I think that helps transition it, and give it more of a two-story, single-family home kind of a look. But it was an attempt. And they are located right next to the downtown zone as well, so it's walkable. And then this is the Yarrow Village. Similar to a courtyard, there is kind of a, you know, walkways, and the parking's up front, but there are walkways, and all of the buildings face into the middle, so it's more of a community. And the buildings are constructed, well, they're single-story, so, you know, they mimic a single-family residence, and the architecture is really nice. And then, can't really tell, but on the rear, originally, they were gonna have the entrances off of the sidewalk, and that really would've given it a more dynamic feel, but, you know, they've got the short fences, so at least it's not fully isolated and blocked off from interaction with the street. But this one is, you know, really mimics, is close to a courtyard, and this is new, fairly new construction. And then, almost missing middle. This is on School Street, these are townhomes. And I think that there was a missed opportunity here. You know, it's missing middle because it's, you know, it's along a corridor, it's in, it's right next to the Camden Heights Market, so it's walkable, and there are a lot of people walking, you know, Camden Heights, I think is great, there's so much, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian activity, and it has kind of a lively feel. I think here, it's just the design, if they had the openings to the front of the street, instead of kinda isolated to the back, I think it would've been a lot more dynamic feeling of a, you know, living arrangement. But, you know, it's, it's close, it's the closest we have, so. And that is the end, just kinda wanted to, I don't know, share that with you guys.
Great job. I wanted to ask a couple questions. So you said they did away with the missing middle in the nineteen forties, nineteen fifties, or did I misunderstand?
Yeah, it's really, it's not that they intentionally outzoned it, or did away with it, it's just that they, you know, really across the US, single-family became the, you know, the rage and the new style of living, and so cities really, and then zoning took effect. So before that, they didn't really have much in the way of zoning. So cities naturally built up, you know, there'd be a business area, and then the houses would start to build around it. And, you know, there was, there was the craftsman style, and Victorian style, and all of that. And then after the, like, World War II, you know, the, with Return of the Soldiers, and then just the baby boom. And, and people started driving, so they were able to move outside of the city core and into the suburbs, and then, so single-family became the way that new cities zoned, you know, zoned their residential areas. And then, you know, they left a little bit of multifamily, and then, you know, kinda like, oh, well, you, you needy people, who can't afford homes, you can go over here, but we don't want you to mix in with the single-family. So it's really when those densities got separated out. And so, really, the missing middle, that range of housing kinda was never accommodated for in the zoning pattern. So it was like, single-family, multifamily.
So you gave us several examples of the missing middle, basically, homes. How did they get zoned for that? Was it prior?
Most of those, well, except for those new constructions, that, those last slides, most of them are in the, yeah, typically, you would find them in, around, you know, the older neighborhoods. And that's true in any city, you're gonna see, you know, the big Victorians, that in, maybe in the old days, were converted into multifamily. In some cases, probably in Eureka, maybe with some rezoning, they were allowed to, you know, they, maybe they zoned higher density, I'm not sure, but, in Fortuna, most of those are, were previously created, or illegally created.
Yeah, I see. And the procedure, if someone was to want a, to zone their home as a missing middle, basically, housing three families, if it's accommodating, do they, do, is it, I know it's a permit thing, but how would you go about that, and the cost about? I mean, do you know?
Yeah, we actually do have one coming up, and it's kinda, that kinda tied in, actually, we had been talking about this, as I said, with the SB two stuff, and then we did get an application for a rezone of two parcels on N Street, it's gonna be coming here shortly. And then the city manager got all excited, and, you know, you need to show the missing middle.
No, I'm glad you did. And is that a very expensive zoning procedure?
Rezones can be, but a small rezone like that of a couple of parcels, I mean, it's just the application fee.
Okay.
Well, if it's an existing, if it's an existing residence, just like a use permit, you know, those are gonna be simpler.
So wouldn't they do that? What do they do about parking? Because most of the stuff we've been showing, we've been around, and most of the stuff that we run into is, it's all about. All these people are parking off, on, on street, and it's just great.
Right. Well, those new, those four examples of new development that I showed you all have parking onsite.
Rainbow Lane and all that, the, the last ones you were showing up in Camden Heights are just, those are, those are mess.
Rainbow Lane is a nightmare, parking-wise.
That's a nightmare mess.
Yes, that...
You know, some of these places are, not trying to be negative about it completely, but I'm not a fan, I just don't. I, I, we see it and deal with it every day, as far as the amount of people, we're densifying it, getting more and more people into, into smaller areas, and this has to go back to, you know, putting a doghouse in the backyard that we were talking about before, and renting it out to people, it's just getting out of hand.
Yeah, the state mandates are unfortunate with, in that regard.
Right.
That they completely ignore parking.
Yeah.
You know, and otherwise, I think on a case-by-case basis, whether it's a conversion or a new development, you know, the city's just gonna have to grapple with, with the parking needs.
The states doing the same thing they've been doing, I mean, you keep letting millions of people in, you have no place to put them. I mean, that's what we're, that's what it's coming down to, they're just making it...
What cities are, some cities are choosing to do is to, is overtly choosing to ignore parking. San Francisco, Eureka, downtown Eureka, I think they've, you know, they've given, they waive a lot of their downtown parking, the example, you know, for, new developments from parking, so I think it's just on a case-by-case basis, until, I mean, there's not a one, you know, we have these parking standards of two, typically two spaces per development, but even then, it doesn't always work. Sometimes that's too much, sometimes it's not enough. It depends on the layout, it depends on how the occupants use it, you know, but, I don't know, the surrounding roadway, what, you know, what kinda overflow is allowed there, or is it already impacted, like Spring Street and Summer Street? It's really a challenging, challenging situation.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
So the rezoning, does it entail, like, you talked about walking distance within a store, or a little cafe, or something, does that, is that part of the rezoning? The area itself, is that what you said?
Are you talking about the, in general?
Yes.
So, yeah, by definition, when you read about missing middle, it always talks about walkability, and, so you need the design that's going to bring people out, and not isolate people behind...
I see.
Behind their big garages, which is fine, you know, we, we like our garages. But some people don't, either they don't like the design, they don't like, you know, the isolating effect that it has, they want to live, so that's part of the design part of the walkability, and then the other part is the locational. So it, by definition, it should be near a commercial opportunity. So some cities, when they create new neighborhoods, you know, they'll do, they have a lot of land, maybe, you know, in that city, and they're, so they're looking, they kinda master-plan this type of housing around a little shopping center.
What kind of latitude do we have as a planning commission to make sure that there's enough parking in a proposed multifamily unit?
Um, so, you know, the, the city has the zoning standards. And do you have a latitude to require more than the minimum? That's a good question. I, so there's the findings that are attached to, say, a use permit or development plan, so I think you would need to make the finding that even under the terms of the zoning code, there's still gonna be an impact, and they need to provide more parking. So, you know, I typically just look at the standard, well, they provided two units, or if it's multifamily, it's one parking space per one-bedroom unit, you know.
We've gone over these a whole bunch, and I know I've always griped about it, because I don't think it's, we need, there needs to be more parking per, per apartment complex, it's just, nobody is single-family no more, nobody's a, a, a single car.
Car owner.
Yeah, there's, everybody's got two cars, there's two people working, can't afford to pay the rent if you don't. And to have old standards is just ridiculous. Well, look, you know, all these apartment complexes we've been doing is, they bring it up and bring it up, and it's, you know, the new one they just did on Smith Lane's gonna be the same way. It's a nice unit, I'm not griping about that, but the way it's set up, it's gonna be a nightmare.
So another lat- area of latitude, another opportunity would be, and I think that's what kinda instigated the committee, the Planning Commission Committee, or the discussion workshops that you're gonna be holding, I think it was parking that triggered that. So you could, you know, talk about it, study it, come up with some kind of a plan, and then you would pass a recommendation on to the council, and then they would direct staff to undergo a rezone, zoning amendment.
Very good. It was Commissioner Mobley's concerns about that, particular on Smith Lane, which has motivated us to have our ad hoc commi- committee. I appreciate you tackling the issue of affordability, because if you look at today's real estate prices, it is, people are suffering as a result of market forces, and yet Commissioner Mobley's reticence, I think, is well-heard, too. How do you, Ms. Shori, see us proceeding with this particular need of the missing middle opportunity, risks, threats, opportunities, you know, the whole shebang for Fortuna?
You know, and I don't have a recommendation. I think it's just being aware that, you know, of other zoning opportunities, so really, it would take a rezone to, you know, cities can, like, study the downtown area, and, or the area surrounding the downtown, say, like a, you know, concentric kind of area, or whatever, it could be over, you know, that area by the high school, between L- It could be over, you know, that area by the high school between L and I Streets, Ninth and Twelfth or Sixteenth. And see if, you know, what are the opportunities there? And do we want to zone in, say, converting a single, old, single-family, you know, 5,000 square foot Victorian building into a four, a fourplex. So just being aware, and I just kind of wanted to share it with, I thought it was kind of cool and how it does apply to Fortuna, you know, existing, and, you know, and as you're driving around, look at the existing missing middle that has, you know, found its way into neighborhoods. And not, not comparing this to the SB9 two-lot developments or subdivisions or the ADU ordinance. This is, this is different. This is kind of looking at it on a case-by-case basis and looking at areas within the city where it would be appropriate as opposed to those, those mandates that, you know, are blanket citywide.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? Thank you, thank you. We're going to move on to item six on our agenda, Planning Commission Staff Communication.
Actually, I think, I think that's it. I think.
Okay, then.
Unless you have any questions.
Anything else from anyone?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.